It is seven o'clock. We will now open our September 27th Town Council meeting. Ed, could you lead us in the front?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, with equal rights and justice for all.
Now we will begin our meeting with public comment. If there are any of the members of the public here in person who would like to speak, please come up and state your name and try and limit your comments to five minutes. Then we will go to any online members of the public who would like to speak. Is there anyone here who would like to say anything? Seeing none. Anyone online?
I do not see anyone.
No hands raised online. And, perfect timing, Rafina, come on in. Farmington traffic strikes again.
I see there was an accident.
I know. I just got by a three-car accident on Farmington Avenue, so. Okay, we're moving on to item D1. Joseph?
Yes, sir.
Let me go here.
Nope, not yet.
Not yet.
So, number one is the presentation.
So.
No, nothing for... So, presentation from Chris Nardi and Peter is our building committee chair for our 1928 building, and I think he's going to start the presentation.
Okay. Want to set it?
Yeah, why don't you go right up to the podium?
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Just a few things. Just hold on here.
Did you know?
Yeah, don't anything or anything. I want to thank you for having us tonight for this special meeting. First of all, I want to just mention all the building committee members that are participating in this. Myself, Peter Masturbatista, Gene Behren is with us, Joe Capitafaro, our liaison to the council, Chris Fagan is the FHS Building Committee Liaison, Jack Kemper is also on the committee as a resident, and Dan Kleiman as a resident, and Michael Walsh is also a resident. And the staff is Kathy Blonsky, Kat, and Russ Arnold, and Devin are on it. We've been meeting frequently for, I don't know, since May. And I'd like to introduce you to Chris Nardi, and he's also working with Dan Stein of Silver and Petricelli Associates, who are doing all of our architectural work and planning on this project. And at this point, I think, Chris, if you want to start the presentation, we'll take it from there.
Is it better for me, when using the laser, to focus on one end or the other?
I think it's easier. That's probably better because it's a little bigger screen, I think.
You will need to speak into the mic for Zoom.
Yeah, okay.
Do I have control, Kat?
You do.
All right. Well, thank you for having us here tonight. We've been working with the 1928 Building Committee for a few months now to begin to look at the initial concepts for how we repurpose the 1928 building or the 1928-plus option, which included looking at solutions for keeping an additional section of the building. We've had our engineers and architects out within the facility touring, looking at the structure, looking at the mechanical and electrical systems and utilities. And this was a presentation we had two weeks ago at the building committee meeting that I wanted to share with you folks to state our initial findings with those meetings, as well as field reports, field research, and document investigation, meaning existing drawings that we were able to locate within the 1928 building. So, this is very familiar to you all, I'm sure. It's the plan we've been looking at since the beginning, and the 28 building down in green, shown in a rectangular form. The most significant finding of our field investigation and document research is that the actual footprint of, or original footprint of that 1928 building included this back wing, which is currently the band room in the high school. When we went out there, we could tell by the age of the brick, the patterning of the brick up on the roof, that some of these walls were original. And then through further document research and some investigation and talking to the Unionville Museum, there were some articles that reinforced that that was an original auditorium within the 1928 building. Again, that's now the band room. So, option one was to look at what does it mean to repurpose the 1928 building only? The area dashed in white, or gray, was that original auditorium. The remainder in the dark green outline is that, is the footprint of the 28 building. Some of the challenges in terms of renovating this or restoring this would be the restructuring of this piece in the back, as well as restructuring of some exterior walls where additions have been built into this facility, as you know. Over the years, many additions came in, and peeling those away can be difficult, especially if significant modifications have been made over time. There is a basement that exists under a portion of this 28 building that expands into the building behind, which is the 50s building. That's where the main electrical service and steam boilers are located. We would be recommending new mechanicals, no matter how we dice or slice this renovation, so that's not a real challenge in terms of what we would be proposing as part of the new building renovation. And we feel there's enough room within the basement portion under the 28 building to house those new systems. Accessibility is a challenge because the entrances and exits on each side are split level. This is the main entrance, or one of the main entrances to the school right now, which leads you down ramps to this first floor within the 28 building. But we, again, have solutions that we feel accomplish, making everything fully accessible as part of this build-out, which I'll share with you. So, our drive at the time that we started the initial investigations was to look at programs that included community and rec, youth and social services, probate, and associated town functions, whether it was record, storage, art, or business incubation space. There was a list of that program. And so, one of our first tasks when we formalized the footprint of this building was to see if we can fit all that program comfortably within the confines. It's about 14,000 square feet on this main level, and then the two stories above are about 10,000 square feet each. So, you can see with the legend, some of the programmatic spaces we were considering for this first floor level. We're also considering an addition that would be a new lobby entrance vestibule. That would serve a few purposes. One, we need to look at the elevator construction. And two, we also need to bring people in at a level that is accessible. I was gonna say.
I have a little technical problem here.
I really thought I was doing something great for myself here, and then I realized I was ruining the entire meeting, so.
Keith wants his own personal recording.
I was trying to turn it down, the volume went up louder. I was like in high school again. I was like, please proceed and disregard the moron on the.
No problem. So, there is an existing elevator on this side of the building, which is, it's small. It would need to be modernized. So, at one point, we were considering an entry addition here. We've kind of been leaning towards this after our meetings with the committee, and I'll explain a little bit later why that is. But I guess to jump ahead, it is, we're looking at parking for this facility to be off to this side of the building. We can also introduce a new elevator tower over here easily that is fully ADA compliant, modernized, and can fit a stretcher, which we know is a need or desire for a lot of towns. The main takeaway is that we felt these programmatic functions of community and rec, social services, and youth services fit comfortably within this first floor of the 1928 building. Additionally, by gaining this space that is the band room, we can incorporate some multi-use or multipurpose space. This rectangular form is a little bit larger than half a basketball court, and we've already determined that we could fit two basketball hoops with three-point lines, pickleball or volleyball within this space. So, that was kind of an added benefit of realizing that this was part of the original structure. Moving up to the second floor, we looked at probates, programmatic needs, and how they would fit. And at this time, we knew we had more than enough space to meet all the needs of probate. In fact, we would probably need to introduce some other programmatic elements to this floor to fit out the remaining spaces. And lastly, on the third floor, we were looking at a combination of record storage for the town, some conference or training spaces, as well as incubator spaces for startup businesses or the arts or not-for-profits. Again, this is, there wasn't a truly well-defined program for the incubator spaces, so it's, again, about 10,000 square feet of program, and we just showed that we can fill out all that space. But in reality, it may be a little bit more than is needed for the programs that were identified at that time. We began to look at some very conceptual parking and site layouts. With this piece coming off the back of the building and the proximity of the ball field to what was the 28 facility, it's our determination that the field would not be a possibility if we were to keep that original footprint due to the distance needed from the building to the field. It was already getting pretty close, and if, I know it's tough to see, but this, what is the band room is actually overlapping the dugouts based on where the field had been laid out as part of the high school project. And we're constrained up to the top of the page as well. You can see these are pretty aggressive grades that they've already manipulated to fit that field within this level surface. And there are additional fields at the top of this hill that can't be moved, so the confines of that space would, in our estimation, make it not feasible to keep both what is the band room and the ball field. So, we said, how can we at least improve this site layout for what we do know is going to be maintained? And those are the tennis courts, which currently exist in this location for the high school plans. And our suggestion is, if possible, it may be beneficial to move those courts closer to the high school, closer to the high school parking, relocate that parking lot that is associated with the tennis courts. So, we now create a clear separation of high school parking, high school use, and 1928 parking and 1928 use. And the parking traffic flow would be likely a single direction around this building, which would help reinforce that separation and prevent people from crossing over from one parking lot to the other. Not that they couldn't be used as overflow in either situation if needed, but ideally they would separate independently. We then took a look at the option two, which is 1928-plus, and really, we wanted to determine a few things. Most importantly, where did it make sense to separate the 50s or the 60s building from the rest of the structure that needs to be demolished? And when I say makes sense, I mean economically as well as structurally. Where can we start to peel parts of this building away to leave something that makes sense? And this is an image from the 65-year book, which shows the building after the 50s addition. So, this is the gymnasium that exists behind the 28 building. And then originally, with that addition, they had locker rooms on this side, and then classrooms that wrapped around the two other sides. Over time, that got tacked onto, the locker rooms got expanded, and most of this exterior wall was completely removed in order to facilitate that expansion of the locker rooms. So, this line here is that outside face of the locker rooms that we were just looking at in the aerial perspective. And if I were to zoom in, I know it's covered in this orange line, but you can see how the locker rooms span beyond that line. All that's left are a series of columns from that original 50s building. That being said, that would still be the point where we would recommend breaking away this building if you wanted to do so, because at one point, this was a structural wall. The gymnasium, while it would make sense, and we understand the desire to have that added gym space, it would make sense to keep that, but that two-story piece was never designed or built as an exterior structural wall, meaning withstanding wind loads. These small classroom wings, sorry, these small classroom and locker wings that circle that structure are really enforcing that gym structure, which is the two-story piece. So, pulling the building away even at this point is going to be significant rework because we have to rebuild that exterior wall as it was taken down as parts of these future additions. On the opposite side, it would make sense to keep the entry point and that exterior wall, but as we approach the back of the building, we run into a similar circumstance with that orange demarcation where we would need to start pulling structure apart, building new exterior walls, reinforcing the structure that exists out there, because very likely it was not built to meet today's codes. But when we do a renovation project like this, where we're changing use of the building, we'll need to bring it all up to current. So, long story short, there would be a lot of work that would need to go into peeling this building away and restructuring the exterior walls. Some of the other concerns is that the desire to keep this 8,000-square-foot gymnasium would mean we're keeping an extra 16,000 square feet of ancillary space that surrounds the gym. At the time, we hadn't, you know, we were having difficulty filling out all the program into the 28 building, so this became program that wasn't really identified as a use right now, but there would certainly be costs associated with not only renovating that space, but maintaining that space for operations over the years. The same challenges exist with the mechanical and electrical systems, but again, that would be reworked in any renovation scenario. And I think it really comes down to project cost. Just comparing apples to apples in terms of square foot costs, it's about twice as much, or close to twice as much, to keep this 50s piece than it would be just to keep the 28 piece in terms of renovation dollars. That doesn't account for operations and maintenance costs over the years. Additionally, it begins to impact the site work. The field, again, wouldn't work if we kept that 50s building, and we would need to keep the tennis courts over on this side of the site, which begins to create that separation that we would like to avoid if possible, where we have high school functions on both sides of the 20 building, and you're gonna have people, you know, coming back and forth and trying to walk across campus. You can see the footpaths that were designed as part of the high school project, which make a lot of sense if there isn't a building back here. But if that 50s piece exists, it starts to not make as much sense. So, that was a bit of the Cliff Notes version, but I wanted to make sure our process was explained, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I was just wondering if we should have like a conclusion kind of for what Peter's thinking, and then have the, and then have the architect and Peter answer questions? Because we have like one more slide that I think would be beneficial to kind of wrap it up, and then, and we can ask questions, just so.
Yeah, I just like, I just want to read this and prepare remarks that we have from the, from the building committee. So, based on the presentation analysis from Silver and Petricelli, the committee determined that option two is oversized based on the town's programmatic needs. And although the committee recognizes that gym space is a significant town-wide need, retaining an additional 60,000 square feet of space would be hard for the, hard for the town to fill, quite frankly. Additionally, with the inclusion of the current band room in option one now, it includes more multipurpose recreational space, which meets most of the needs of the recreational programs mentioned in the statement of needs. Option two also creates a physical site separation that Chris just showed us between the high school and tennis courts, which may cause parking and circulation conflicts. And lastly, due to the size of option two, this is likely to be an expensive renovation project. If the, if the town decides not to renovate immediately, there will still be significant long-term costs. As a result, the 19 building, 1928 Building Committee is recommending that the Town Council amend the 1928 Building Committee charge to eliminate option two from the scope and recharge the committee. This would allow the committee to concentrate our efforts on option one as we work towards a referendum in the spring of the, of 2023. So, in a nutshell, by eliminating all this excess space, it's going to give us a lot more versatility that we can use, and that is very realistic for the peace of the town. So, on that note, if we have any questions for the town.
Sure, let me start with questions. Rafina?
Can you go back to the option one slide, please? Back a little bit more? Oh, no. That was the first one. Okay. So, the band room that you have sort of greened out back there?
Yes.
Do we absolutely need, I mean, is the ad hoc committee looking at keeping that absolutely as part of this plan? Or is there some thought to figuring out maybe not including that? Is there a reason why we absolutely have to keep the band room, I guess is the question?
Well, I would say right now, it was, Chris has determined that that is part of the 1928 building that we would not have to demolish, and that it would bring us good community space for potentially dance programs, yoga courses, things like that. It'll just give us a little bit more recreational space. And then if we had to demo that, Chris, you could go into that.
Yeah. Yeah, if, understanding that that was part of the original building, there was never an exterior wall in between these two green lines. And so, if we were to peel that away, there would be extensive renovation and structural work to reinforce this back wall of the 28 building and infill these portions. Can it be done? Absolutely. But as Peter said, when we realized that this was part of the original building, it was kind of exciting because we knew community and rec was looking for that gym slash multipurpose type space where they can hold practices or classroom-type yoga events. And so, we felt that that would be a benefit to maintain this two-story volume for those purposes.
Oh, roughly, what was the square footage on that? I think I asked you.
About 3,500 square feet for this entire piece.
I, I'm asking about that specific space, because I thought you said later that if we kept that band room space, that we would lose the potential of a ball field, and that we would maybe have to move the tennis court. So, that was my.
Yeah, we agreed. We, we felt, I know the ball field was an alternate in the high school project. It was already pretty close to this 28 building. But, but yes, it wouldn't, in our estimation, be feasible with this projection off the back, and it may be difficult even without that. You know, if the ball field were to stay, you wouldn't be able to have any roads or circulation behind the 28 building, because it would be encroaching back into that field area. The only way to keep it would likely be as it's shown in the high school plan now, where there's just green space, no entry back here, and the walking path kind of scoots right by that 28 building. I think redeveloping this in, in any way is gonna be problematic to the ball field. We haven't fully done a study on that, but if that's something that you would all like us to take a closer look at, we can certainly do that. Kat, do you want to address anything with the ball field right now?
Yeah, so the, the building committee, the high school building committee, did vote to make that an alternate. So, as it stands right now, the ball field is not included in the base bid. It's one of 10 alternates that will be considered and prioritized by the committee when bids come back. If bids are favorable, there's a chance that it could go in, but it was made an alternate earlier, earlier in the project.
Right, I understand that. But if we are now looking to change the site plan somewhat and keep the 1928 building plus the, you know, extra bump out, then that would foreclose any possibility of putting that potentially in the high school building project alternate.
Right. It would, it would probably not be feasible to include the ball field, but there are a long list of alternates that we have. A lot of them are inside the building, so I think the building committee, when making this an alternate, wanted to look towards flexibility and see if there's money that we can put back into the project. It would likely be inside the building first.
Okay.
How, just to follow up on that, how far down the list is the ball field of?
We haven't finalized the priority list of it, but I will say that probably, like I was saying, the interior finishes and things that were, had to be removed during the value engineering process inside the building would probably be higher on the list.
And sorry, and for, we're talking specifically tennis courts. And we just, we just, at our last meeting, made a motion to improve the tennis courts at IAR, right?
Right.
For the purpose of the high school tennis team.
Yes, yeah. That's because when the, the construction's taking place, the tennis court, the tennis team can't play there.
Yeah, so we're not forswearing tennis out of Farmington High, we're just relocating them.
Yeah, right, exactly. And the thing that's nice about this plan with the tennis courts is that with the tennis courts on the other side, with them now being relocated up there, and then the parking's there, it really separates kind of school functions and the 1928 functions. So, I think the tennis courts are in a better location if, with the 1928 building, the site layout is better.
Other questions?
Thanks, CJ. Thanks for the presentation. I think it makes sense to remove the option two based on the facts that you guys presented, based on the cost and the circulation issues that would occur and, and it being oversized to, to the town's overall needs. My question, and I know the probate court has been kind of undersized for quite a while right now, do you have numbers on what the square footage is right now for what we have for the probate court versus what, what would be proposed in 1928 Building Renovation Project?
I don't have those numbers with me, but we do have them, and I apologize for not having that tonight.
Okay. Do you have like an approximation of?
Yeah, well, I, in general terms, Edward, this, what is proposed on this is significantly bigger than what they have here, but we're still working, and the committee is still working on the, the size of everything, and this was just the first glance of where things are gonna go. But in comparison to what they have here and what is shown here, it's substantially a lot more space than they have. So, I think that, like Chris had mentioned, that even what he showed there, I think is actually probably more space than they need. And so, we would probably be looking to put something else on that second floor, too. And the committee discussed tonight about, again, what operations could be potentially moving in from the town hall into the 1928. So, that's what the committee's been focusing on, their meetings about what's actually going in the building. Yeah, and Chris is still working with the department heads and what their space needs are to see how to fill the building. So, that's what they're tasked with.
I would say, just rough numbers, it's probably doubling or more because of the addition of the courtroom, is adding so much new square footage to that program. Just to give you a reference of scale, a floor, the upper floor plates in the 28 building are about 10,000 square feet, and the floor plates in, in Town Hall are about 14,500. So, probates, right now, only a few thousand square feet, and we'd be looking at, you know, filling 7,000 square feet in, on, of the second floor with that program.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
It looks like Brian is online. He does have a question.
Oh, Brian?
I can. Good evening, everyone. You're, good to see you all looking so well. I wanted to say thank you for this presentation. I've really been looking forward to this, because I, as I know many of us have been curious to know. Yep?
Just hold on one second, our volume is really loud here. Hang on a second.
I'll keep it down.
Hold on one second, Brian.
Sure.
We have Nutmeg here, we can ask them to help us.
No problem. I will speak softly. Yeah, I did want to say thank you to Peter and everyone else for this presentation, because I've been looking forward to seeing this information. And thank you for the surprising news about the addition and all the options that we have available to us. One question I did have is, do we have a place for the ball field to go? I am sorry if I wasn't aware of that, where that might be going. And I have one other question.
Kat, Kat, where, what is the situation with the ball field now in comparison? Where do they play now?
A lot of the games are played at Tunxus Mead. This is a, the existing conditions are a practice field, maybe freshman JV. Without a ball field onsite, those would have to go to Tunxus Mead as well.
So remain where they are.
Yes. And, and we are repurposing the ball field at IAR so that games can be played there to replace what we're missing this year. So that could always be a future consideration as well.
Thank you. And one other question. As we're all looking at the costs associated with the potential redevelopment of, of this piece of property for our uses, and as we're going to be comparing these, these prices, I know this isn't the moment for it, but are we also considering other spaces in town that might be appropriate for a probate court or maybe for some additional space or storage without having to revamp this, this building? That might be more cost effective down the road? Is someone looking at that, not for this moment, but as part of the mix of what we need to consider in terms of how we move forward with where we place these things if we need to use them or accommodate for them?
Let me try and clarify, Brian. Are you saying if we don't do anything with the 1928 building, where would those things go?
Not exactly. What I'm saying is, as we determine what to do with the 1928 building, are we looking for options that might serve a similar purpose, but without refurbishing the entire building? That might be more cost effective? I don't know if that's a possibility, but is there available industrial space that we could use for probate or for storage? Or something that might be rather further, rather than the redevelopment?
I think, and I'll defer if anyone has a better answer, but I think right now, the, the probate would be on the campus here. We'd keep it on the campus, so it would either be in town hall or a renovated 1928 building. We wouldn't be looking to send the probate somewhere else. If they were off campus, I think they'd probably go to another town, frankly.
Kathy, do I have anything?
Right.
Wrong on that?
No, I think, I think that we're renovating, that the purpose is to renovate the space to move town operations into the, and community space into the 1928 building.
Okay. Which is fine, I understand that that is the purpose of this, but I was just wondering as an option, might we consider some other space that is already existing that may not need the renovations that this would require?
I would say right now, the committee is in charge with looking at alternative spaces outside of the 1928 building. This committee is pretty much sticking to the 1928 building and not looking for alternative sites for any other departments in town at this time. So the simple answer is no, we are not looking for outside space for any departments.
Does that answer your question, Brian?
Yeah, it does. I'm just checking to see if, if, I understand that the charge of, of the committee, which I'm not questioning at all, I'm just wondering, as we decide as a town, if the, if we're, if the objective is to meet a need for space, which I think is important, and is this the space that we, is needed, or is there a better or less, more cost effective space that might be considered down the road if we're to, if we're trying to accommodate space need? That's my only question. I know that's not the place for this.
Yeah, I think the answer is, if the, the town decides not to renovate this building and this building gets leveled, then we may be looking at different places for, to fill the needs. So with this group, with the 1928 building, it is just a question of the renovating of this building and what fits in it, and can this building fit our needs? And I think we've clearly heard tonight, this building can fit all our needs. So if we were not to use this building, I don't think we'd partially renovate this building and put different departments somewhere else. I think if we're renovating this building, we're going to use it for our needs.
Certainly, I wanted to make sure that we have the ability to meet the needs wherever they might happen to be, that's all. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions in here?
A couple of quick questions. One, you were talking about the traffic flow, which is coming around the front of the building and circling around the back. Now, when it goes around the back, does it then cut through the other parking lot, or does it come down the side of the building and meet back up? Because it looked like it was a one-way in front of it. So that blue line, you've got the one-way circulation. Okay, that arrow, where does that go from there?
That would tie into the main vehicular circulation at, at the back of this lot.
Gotcha. Okay, so it goes in there and then turns back down to Monty's and goes out on the outside of that parking lot? Okay, that's good. Just wanted clarification. The 1928 building, the band room, basically. So if I understand correctly, if you were to try and cut off the band room, what you'd have is a gaping hole in the building, which is not an exterior wall, and you'd have the same problem that you were talking about with the 1960s building, you're going to have to now create an exterior wall where none existed before, which, according to what you said on the 60s building, would be incredibly expensive.
Correct.
Okay. So it seems like, cost effective wise, it's, it's actually more cost effective to keep the space we've shown on our statement of needs that we actually need, which is why we started this whole process and looked at beyond the 1928. I mean, for anyone listening, the original discussion was, we had needs for parks for the rec department, and we needed auditorium space. And the thought was, just questioning, is it worthwhile to save the 60s wings, the 70s, 80s wing? And does that become more cost effective? Clearly, the committee came back and said it's not more cost effective to keep beyond the 1928 wing, and we're almost asking that same question. I think Rafina brought it up in a valid question. Does it make sense not to have that on here? And it sounds like that's sort of the same question we were asking at the beginning. If you cut it open and you have an exterior wall, now you're going to?
Right, just as a small example, there, there are a lot, but the exterior wall has footings, concrete footings down to frost. This interior wall does not. So just there, you're looking at demoing, excavating, pouring new footings to accept that new exterior wall.
Gotcha.
And that's just one example.
Okay. And just one other question having to do with the mechanicals, because I know the mechanicals were outside the footprint of this, but your recommendation would be, at this point, with the age of the current mechanicals, our best bet would be to replacing those mechanicals anyway?
Given the age and their, their steam boilers, we would never recommend steam in a building of this use. It's not going to be efficient. It's probably not going to meet the needs that you would require for zoning in a town building. So yes, we would recommend more efficient, smaller equipment that we know can fit into the 28 structure.
Okay, great. Any other questions?
Seeing none. Kathy, what would we like to go from here?
I think it would be a motion on number two.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Agenda item D2. Based on the recommendation of the 1928 building committee, the town council has eliminated option two from the May 10, 2022 charge and recharging the committee with the following. And as you see that below, attach the floor of bullets.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this particular motion? Okay, and basically, the motion is following what we just heard from the presentation in the 1928 building, removing what our original, one of the steps of our original charge to look at beyond the original 1928 building, and just keeping this to the 1928 building itself. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, Brian. Your volume's back up. Opposed? Hearing none? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you.
Agenda item D3. I make the make a motion to review the draft timeline and communications plan for the 1928 building project as noted as below.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Kathy?
So important milestone dates of interest to the town council would include in November of 2022, a potential community meeting. In December 2022, the town council to review a conceptual design and preliminary pricing and set a total project and net municipal rate. Charge the committee to proceed with schematic designs. February and March of 2023 would be tours and community presentations. This would also be discussed during our budget. And then in April 2023, we would send the project to referendum, the town meeting, and the referendum would be in conjunction with the, with the town budget. I think we have, do we have a presentation on the, we've included the high level communication plan, and it just shows that we have, I think, Kat, why don't you just quickly go through that?
So this is just a very high level communications plan for the 1928 building committee to get to referendum. We were planning on having three dedicated newsletters to the project going out, the first one in a couple of weeks, based on the new charge from the town council, another one in January, after, like Kathy said, the town council would then have you proceed to schematic design after a review of financials and setting a budget, and then one in March with some updates prior to sending this to referendum. We also wanted to hold a community meeting in November, giving residents an opportunity to see where we are, to give feedback, comments before it goes to town council. And then February, March, we were planning on having at least twice a month in those two months, a tour of the 1928 building and a community meeting, and also coffee with the committee, which was popular with the building committee, and also the town council has held some of their own. And then ongoing, we have a website, which is 1928building.org. We send a chair report after every meeting, updates in the town newsletter, and Everbridge.
Very thorough. Thank you.
And it is going to be an aggressive schedule for, and for the architects and for the building committee.
Yeah, and that's required in this situation, really. With everything going on in the high school, the construction we're looking at in the high school, that creates this incredibly aggressive timeline, which again, would potentially put a referendum with our budget referendum?
Yes.
Yes. So hopefully, we get a tremendous turnout for the budget this year and great responses, yes.
Right, and then the other thing, just to remember, in December, we'll also, when we go through the financials, at that point in time, we'll talk about the ARPA funds that we have, too. And so that's a part of the discussion in, for a net municipal cost. Because we do, we have saved our ARPA funds.
We, and we had voted to cancel, the ARPA funds would be used for major infrastructure. This would certainly qualify as a major infrastructure issue, so. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. Move on to item E, new business. What's that? Oh, no, we did not, thank you, Jessica. Before we move on to item C, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Waiting for that. Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you, Joe. Don't want to skip that. Okay. Item E, new business. Seeing none. Item F, I do not believe we have an executive session. I will leave you with a quote from Jacqueline Kennedy. "We are the only country in the world that trashes its old buildings. Too late we realize how very much we need them." With that, I'll go for a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the September 27, 2022 town council meeting.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at 7:43. Thank you.